So, welcome to our people in the audience. Also, welcome people online. To the monthly Mount Vernon School Board Meeting. I'll start it off by reading our public comment procedure. We will take public comment tonight from our virtual audience if we have any guests. If you wish to speak during the public comment sessions, we'll allow in-person guests to speak for three minutes first. Once we go through all of our in-person guests, we will open it up for virtual speakers on our Zoom link. And in order to speak, please do the following: raise your virtual hand, entering your name into the avatar profile. And when speaking, turn your camera on and say your full name and town of residence. When these are complete, you will have three minutes to scoot. Also, I want to make note that we have two board members tonight that are running a little bit behind due to work commitments. So, Mr. Torres is going to try to join us through Zoom, if not live, and Jess Hingley is going to be tardy by about twenty minutes, twenty-five, depending on track. So. Our first item to discuss is the consent agenda. I will read through the elements and then I'll allow the board members, if they have any questions or comments, and also allow our SAU office teammates to comment if there's need. So, number one is the budget transfer 2024. Number two is the Mount Vernon School District Department of Education Full Year 2023 signed document. Number three is the minutes from our meeting from September thirteenth. Four is our Play Club Proposal. Five is a Ceramic Studio Club Proposal. And six is a Project Paint Club Proposal. So, I will open the floor up to Mr. Selfandure or Mr. Lawrence, whether you have any questions about any of those elements?
Was there no public comment?
I didn't. What, no, no, not yet? Anybody on the line, Steve?
No, sir. Okay. Whoops, we have one person now. We have one person attending online. There's no hand up or anything like that. Okay.
But we did officially open public comment.
Yeah. No. I had a question on the budget transfer. What exactly is that? In the sense of, are we short that fifteen thousand four thirty-one, or walk me through that?
Nope, this is just the distribution of the the non-union salary pool to the actual employees. So, it gets budgeted in one line, and then when we get to this year, it gets scripted into the actual people.
Okay, and is that at one time, or is that monthly?
We do it all at once, and then the board approves it.
I had a question. Page thirty of the document. Where it shows the cost per student, cost per pupil at nineteen thousand six oh three. Do you have any idea where that puts us in terms of other districts and schools, you know?
And we can get that to you.
I just want to see, I mean, our reputation has always been right. But I don't know, maybe we're right, we're right in the wheelhouse. So, I just was curious as to what that, how that number landed.
It'd be higher than the average, but it's, there's always Lincoln Woodstock or something, and then Blue Mountain is a little bit more watered over.
Okay, it's something, alright. Then on page thirty-two. And this is the food service. And again, obviously, I'm not an accountant. I didn't stay at a holiday. Possibly still good questions. Looks like we're short thirty-eight thousand five twenty-seven. Is that last year's number that we were short on the food service? Because it's in that report of twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, so that we also had fund equity that was applied to that. So, the transfer from the general fund was actually a little bit over the seven thousand. So, if you look at other financing sources. There is a transfer.
And I know we've talked about this a lot, which I think is fine, but do we anticipate that we're going to be in a similar situation? Because I don't think we raised our rate, so did we, did we sense that at the end of this year that we could be looking at another, say, minus thirty-five?
So, last year, we had some challenges with staffing and staffing issues within the food service program. This year, that is resolved, but there are health insurance elections that have changed. So, that will change the food service budget as well.
Okay.
Try not to get.
You don't really. Well, I know it's just such a fine line between trying to bring that in to zero.
Yep, so.
It's really hard.
It is, it is a challenge and something that personal, I crystallize need on regularly. We will be bringing reportedly food service projections for you. So, we'll be able to have a better sense of where we are as we move through the year.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And then my last question is on page forty-three. In the school district profile page. And again, I see our expenditures at six million and change. And our revenues, total revenues of five seven and change, which is a two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar to the negative, and I'm wondering. Is that, am I misreading?
Yeah, so I think you're this is a pretty complicated form, so you're not to the negative. You did have fund balance to fund the warrant articles.
Okay.
And you had you were able to meet most of what we projected to offset the tax rate. But I'm not sure exactly what you're looking at, but you might be not, including additional overhead funding that came in in terms of matching the revenues and the expenses.
Okay.
But I'm happy to, if you want to, when we get the audit, that's probably the best time to take a look at that, because this is really the financial, the un-audited financial.
Yeah.
So.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
I had a question about the clubs and activities. They, is this brand-new clubs? Yeah, you know, it never existed before.
Yeah, so per the, the contract, we have ten. MB has ten co-curricular clubs budgeted each year. Some of those are rollovers every year. Some of those, a good chunk, if not most of those, are based on student interest or based on staff. Talking to students and collaboratively coming up with the clubs for the year. So, those three tonight are actually, all three of those are new, never offered before. I can speak to those during my report, but, but two of those are a result of our hill now being set up. So, you'll see, we're putting that to use, firing that up. And one of those is a beautification of our bathrooms and some areas, just to bring some positive messaging and just a little more personalization to the, to the bathroom. Or invite.
So, it's already part of the plan, and these are just picking items?
Yeah, yeah, so I'll, I'll bring these forward over the course of the year. The board will take a vote and approve or not.
Anything else on the consent agenda items? I'll welcome a motion to accept consent agenda items one through six. I'll make my motion.
I will second that motion.
And all those in favor? Three yeses? Thank you. And at this point, we are up to the aforementioned principal's report, Mr. Leclerc.
Alright, thank you, thank you, thank you. So, without further ado, I'm going to introduce our sixth-grade teachers, Christina Anderson, Suzanne Mazak. Just want to say a couple of quick things. First time you've seen them since last spring, actually. I think there was a, they didn't come to a meeting, but there was a little presentation of, of some end-of-year stuff. I want to thank both Christina and Suzanne for a great end-of-year, last year, our graduation, our all-end-of, end-of-year events. Really positive, heard a lot of positive feedback from the community on them, so thank you both for your work last spring. And then, leading into this year, as you know, sixth grade is a big year. Many of our sixth graders have been here for seven years. So, we take that seriously. This is a big end-of experience for MBVS students. And one of the things that I talked about back when I started here was being that students aren't here for seven years. Building that responsibility and leadership, and, and as they grow in, in years and responsibilities, how can we flip flip the narrative from being served to serving, you know? And so, we've had a lot of conversations around that with our upper grades. We have the recess mentoring program that I've talked about over the last couple of years. And this year, are really expanding those responsibilities and leadership roles for our upper students and our sixth graders. So, tonight, we're going to talk about that, and Christina and Suzanne have done a lot of work with that over the summer into the fall. So, thank you.
It looks like it's going to keep flashing in the now, but well. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Suzanne Mazak, and I teach humanities. My name is Christina, and I teach. We are.
Tom, I think you rescued it.
Thank you.
Let's see, we'll see.
Christina, Tom and I were sitting down end of last year, beginning of this year, and we were thinking about how do we get our sixth graders to be active in our community, and what do we want to see from them? And so, we came up with a few reasons for why our sixth graders should have more responsibilities at school. Providing ability to develop and grow in their self-esteem and confidence. Having time management skills and executive functioning skills, as well as collaboration skills and communication, not just with each other and with us, but with other adults throughout the building and other students. And taking pride in our community and in ownership of, this is our space, we're all in this together.
And this is the test. But it, it goes beyond just that the fact that they've been here for seven years, and it's time to give them more. It actually is developmentally appropriate to give them more responsibility and in their best interest. So, according to the authors of The Whole Brain Child. Giving jobs to students of this age actually improves their decision-making skills and their reasoning skills. And it helps them apply them in meaningful, authentic settings. And then, additionally, sixth graders, they're eleven and twelve years old. So, developmentally, eleven-year-olds are ready to handle additional tasks. And in fact, for twelve-year-olds, giving them more responsibilities, more responsibility actually improves their academic and social outcomes. So, it not only is great for them, it also gives a little boost to them academically as well and socially.
Here are a few of the jobs we currently have. We have our recess mentors that Tom has started. We have junior librarians who come help, this is Garrity in the library, with shelving books and other projects that she has. We also have kindergarten aides who go help with the younger students in the morning, morning work, how do you hang up your jacket? How do you make your lunch choice, things like that? We have studio assistants who help clean up the art room at the end of the day. We have MBVS announcers who help Mr. Leclerc later with the morning announcements, getting our great day here at the Hilltop started. We have community coordinators who have already started planning, they did the Wonderful Grandparents and Special Friends Day, and they're hoping, they're begging us to help with Veterans Day coming up. And we also have some guidance assistants. We also are listening to the needs and the wants of the sixth graders. There is a huge interest in newspaper and in a yearbook committee. So, we're working on how can we fit those into our schedule to support the students and help them find their passions.
And in fact, one of the students, her dream is to become a journalist. So, she has been begging, can we have a newspaper, please? That's her passion, it's what she wants to do.
Who are we to deny that, right? And we actually had a sixth grader today, we told them we were doing this, and they're like, oh, we can come to the board. And I said, okay, you'll be a board member. So, they're ready and willing. So, we asked the students that we were preparing for tonight to reflect on the experiences they've had this year so far and what it means to be a leader and to participate in these jobs. And before they started these jobs, we developed them, and we went through the jobs with the students. And then we even had them go through a mini-application process. The students reviewed all of the roles and selected which jobs they thought they were most qualified for, based on the skill sets that they had. And then they had to tell us why they had the skills necessary to complete the jobs that they selected. And our first student, we have a quote from, really focus on the application process and what that meant to that student. And the student said, when you pick your job, you have to make sure it's something you want to do. You have to do it because you want to do it. And we're really seeing that with our students, that they're following their passion, and it's wonderful to see them happy and excited to come to school every day and to get right to work.
And it's enriching to, as a teacher, empowering to see them applying things that they've learned in a setting of something that they actually want to do.
Absolutely. Another student who is a kindergarten aide said, I really enjoy spending time with the kindergartners and getting to know them better. It has been really awesome to help them with their learning. And then another student was starting a new job and said, things get easier if you do them more. Some things aren't as scary as they seem when you hear about them. Just do it more, and it'll get easier. We spend a lot of time every day in our classrooms talking to them about grit and perseverance. And so much of it is, you know, academically based, but it is so wonderful. And so, as you said, empowering to see them using it in real-world context and to be able to reflect on it and notice it in their own life is just an amazing experience for us as well as for the students.
And just a couple of success stories that we, we've heard from the students. There was a student who signed up to be a junior librarian. They thought they were qualified for it. They filled out the application. We selected them for it, but they weren't totally sure about it. And they end up saying, no, it's really fun. I'm glad that I did it. So, it wasn't maybe at first a passion for them, but now they're like, no, this is great. I, I got it.
I'd go every day.
Yeah. And then, one of our MCs, the other ones pictured there for our grandparents and special friends day. One of the MCs in the middle of the event, another group was singing, told me a sign and said, hey, I have terrible stage fright. Like, this is the kid who's like speaking in front of the massive crowd of hundreds of people currently. I have terrible stage fright, but I'm up here right now, and I'm doing this, Ms. Anderson. And he was so proud of himself and overcoming that fear. And you would not have known, you would have no clue that he had stage fright versus me, like shaking my boots up here. He did a great job. And then, one of our kindergarten aides made a comment to me about how she's seeing the growth in her, the students that she's been working with each morning, and how, so she's been doing it since week two, three of this year, so kindergartners are brand-new. Don't know a lot about how school works, and so she, she brought up the fact that the kindergartners are learning, and she's watching them learn, and it's been really powerful for her. We just wanted to show you some pictures from the community, the jobs, starting with these community coordinators. Now, I want to point out, there are not a lot of pictures of them actually doing their jobs. This is like a rare.
Call there on the right, he, we had a pep rally recently called a store assembly, and I couldn't get my phone to sync to the Bluetooth in the back of the stage, and I was sweating through my shirt because it's go time. Mr. Leclerc, all I have to do is do, 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 do. He's the tech guy.
Yes, he is. The new Mr. Martina. Yeah, so we don't have lots of pictures of kids actually doing their jobs because they're independent. Like, we don't do anything with them. They come in the morning, they put their stuff down, make their lunch choice, and they leave. And they're down in the halls, they are working with the kindergartners, they're working in the library, wherever. So, they're on their own, and they're doing this. So, we don't have a lot of pictures of them in action, because we don't follow them and see what they're doing. They're, they're the ones doing it. So, this is a rare picture of them in action. Got a couple of our tech helpers. Obviously, Mr. Leclerc just spoke to his prowess, went to tech. Oh, he was thrilled. He ran the entire sound system for the entire grandparents' day, the whole thing.
No help.
No help, literally just him and his friend, the one that came on the side giving him a thumbs up like, first play. So, totally independent with that. Additional task, a little subcommittee of the community coordinators was our art squad. They put together the banner that was hanging in front of the stage for grandparents' special friends day. It's still hanging up there now. Beautiful work. They gave up their recess voluntarily to work on it. They worked on it in the mornings. Pretty much any second that they had quiet time, they were working on it and, and got it ready in about three days. It looked beautiful.
And that's all their design.
All them. Yeah, they did everything. And then, we also had another subcommittee of script writers, the entire script for grandparents' day that our MC has read from. Totally designed by the kids. Kids wrote the entire thing. So, they were like, great, amazing. They didn't want to be the ones up there speaking. Wasn't their thing, but they still, it was their words that were presented to the entire audience.
And again, as you can see by their lunch trays, they gave up their time off to come in and work and get it done. Here, we have some junior librarians in this very room, and we also have some kindergarten aides down in kindergarten assisting with the morning kids. This is a few of the recess mentors. We do have more who will be starting next month. And students are already expressing an interest as we reevaluate and reapply for jobs in winter that they're rearing to go again.
We've learned every picture. I'll get these, I saw who signed up for every single job.
There are, there are many, I would say, or close to it. And these are our first pair of morning announcements, morning announcers. So, they started in September, they finished this week. They did a really great job. It, it's hard to talk in that microphone to make sure you are clearly heard and understood, to tell that joke and make it land.
It's.
And we had our next batch of morning announcers start this week. They're also very excited to, to kick it off. And one of those students was saying that it's so important because if Mr. Leclerc is not on there, if we're not on there, Ms. Mazak, our day is not getting started, and we don't know what's happening.
It's off the day. That's the tone for the day, too, for the whole school. And really, ultimately, we're helping the kids soar, right? That's why we're here, that's what we're about, mantra. We're helping them soar and, and preparing them for middle school, but not only preparing them for middle school, we're getting them ready for the real world as well.
Question or comments for?
And if anyone is interested to talk to our kids, if you have a job, you do in your real life, and just want to share with the kids, they love to hear from us.
Many years ago, I read the morning announcements at Kingswood High School. Many years.
So, we like.
So.
Here you are now.
And here I am now. I have a quick question. So, as students come up with, you know, other scenarios or jobs that they're interested, is there like a process they go through, or they just kind of approach one of you, kind of knock it around with them?
Yeah, they'll present it to us and will make sure it's feasible. I know one, something that they're super interested right now with, they love.
Love him.
Our, our students.
We all do.
Exactly. They think he's amazing, which he is. And so, they're like super interested in helping him out. They're trying to figure out, like, how can we enable them? Yeah, yeah, exactly. Because they really love him. So, that's like one thing that has come from them that we're like trying to get happen.
Thank you. Well said. Mr. Leclerc, what's your?
So, with the report?
Yeah.
Yeah, so your report, I'll keep it, I'll keep it pretty, I've got eyes on the year. Highlight. I did want to let you know. I attended, by invitation, the selectman meeting last week. I was invited to, to attend their meeting. I was at the book sale the weekend before that, and and someone came up to me and said, congratulations on the recognition or whatever. And I, I was a little confused about what that was, and as it turns out, it got around the community pretty quickly that niche, and I'm not really one for these rating sites, but there is one of the higher, well-known, higher-rated sites that ranks colleges and, and schools. Ranked us, or we are ranked number four in New Hampshire Elementary Schools out of two sixty-six, I think it was. And number one in Hillsborough, which we're talking about actually in committee tonight. So, I just wanted to recognize our staff, our team, for their, their hard work, their excellent work over many years that, that as, as the selectmen recognize, has seen this trend upward, you know? And I want to thank the board for the support over the years. You know, I've only been here a few years, but I know the work has been happening for quite a few years, and this team has been working for quite a few years. Not to get to number four, but to do the work every day for kids that matters, and the results then happened, right? So, that's, that's, there was an honor to be there, and I just wanted, wanted to report that back to the board. And then, just a couple of quick thank-yous in our community. We had our fire prevention visit, week visit to the station today. I want to thank Chief Wilson. Special Friend Day, Ms. Ward, the music teacher. You saw some of the photos related to that. Went really well. Huge turnout. We had our first store assembly. I mentioned that. Officer D from MBPD was our guest speaker. We're going to have one each quarter, each term. This was the S in store, show respect. Our next one will be on others first. So, we'll have a guest from the community at each of our store assemblies. Our PTA put on our ice cream social really well-attended. Press on the, so, assessing the pictures there. Really positive, open house, really, really good attendance. I put out a survey, survey on that, and it was very positive, feedback very positive on open house. And then, if I could, I'll just real quickly, again, circle back to the co-curricular request there, the Clay Club, Ceramic Studio, and Project Paint. Basically, just looking for approval to run those. Two of those are in January, February, and then one of those coming up in November.
I think we've had a few of those as part of the consent. Was that accurate?
So, thank you.
You're good to go.
Great, thanks.
Nice, nice team picture, too. Those are good ones. And is that Forrest in the front?
Yes, that is Forrest. Yeah. Our newest student, more-legged student.
And first, middle school principals report. Does anybody want to touch base on that at all? I know it's in the packet, but any questions from anyone here? Would anybody want to comment on?
Just that way.
Good, good. Also, he doesn't say to the board, if there's a reading packet, if there's any questions, then more information, clarification. And if you want to, you think of it, you send it to us, we'll get it before we come. Maybe Kristen or someone at the building will be answering it. If we can't. So, Tom, real quick, I'm just looking at your attendance enrollment update, not attendance at all.
Yeah.
We anticipated that plus three, or is that another plus three from what you told us about at the last?
So, that was since the September first enrollment?
Yeah.
So, that was since our last meeting, since our last board meeting.
We're up to two thirty-one. One.
Just, yeah, do we add? Yes, so those three were since the last meeting.
Any indication there might be more that you've heard of?
I don't know necessarily, no. But the trend that we're seeing is not as much at this point in the year. I don't anticipate necessarily like new families moving into Mount Vernon. But we have seen a trend toward homeschoolers coming in full-time. That's, that's continued. We saw some of that over the summer.
Yep.
And, and we've seen some of that now in the fall. We still have some students that have only come in for specials, and some of those are, are sort of warming up to potentially more, more programming here.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, also, any questions or comments on the transition memo from the middle school principal? Or the facilities update from Mr. Preston?
Thanks, one more question about that.
Yeah.
Just quick, like snapshot from, I guess both you and Christine about any, the PD that's gonna happen during early releases. Come on, next week, is that right? What's happening with teachers and staff that day?
Yeah, um, we're said it's a curriculum focused day and we actually have probably five or six different choices for teachers um to kind of engage with. Um, so it's um curriculum, but um certainly uh some choice built in. And some of the work, they may be meeting up with Clark Wilkins um to do some work either for math or for literacy. So grade levels will have the opportunity. We'll probably be sending something out um in like Monday memos uh to staff about that so that they can reach out to grade levels and firm up exactly what their plans are by grade level. Also, we're excited for that. Yeah, and we just had our PD day on Friday, RSEY, you need it.
Thank you.
Okay, our next agenda item is uh an update from this land world about the Bridges Program Evaluation Update.
Yeah.
Back to you.
Thank you. Um, I'll uh kind of hit a few highlights and then happy to answer any questions. Um, last year was our first full year of implementation of our Bridges Math Program, kindergarten through fifth grade. So we just wanted to do a quick uh report to the board to um update you and um make sure you are just aware of all of the work that had been done last year. Um, one of the most important things was to make sure we had all of the materials and resources we needed and we were lucky enough to be able to use our S R grant funds to be able to support the purchase of our math program, which was um a huge piece. Um, and uh with that, we also did a lot of curriculum work and a lot of professional development in addition to having those materials and resources, which was, you know, that first critical step. Uh, we did work around our scope and sequence. Our teachers attended summer professional development. We had professional development throughout the school year. Um, usually during our late start time. Um, and many of those times were um really collaborative across the SAU, which was really nice for our teachers to be able to connect with their grade level partners down the hill. Um, the feedback from the first year um was um all very positive, really successful. Um, the teachers really appreciated that time throughout the year. It was that time where uh, you know, they had a certain, you know, say staff meeting time or or early release time. And even if it was just to get their calendar in order for the next month, you know, we have a calendar map um program that's an important component of this program. So even getting organized um with their their calendar and getting uh, you know, meeting with their real level partner to talk through their plans that were coming up for the month. That was a huge piece of feedback that the teachers really appreciated, any extra collaborative time that they had. Um, they also appreciated uh the scoring of the spreadsheets we created for them and the playlists we created them in a uh for them in their grading and recording system. It just kind of took that burden off. Um, so that was a really good program, uh really uh good feedback. And the other thing was that calendar math program, the feedback um from teachers was that it was amazing to see how it really pre-taught concepts to students and also um circled back continuously to con- uh content for students. So it was really nice to see the growth during that calendar math time. And uh that's just called Number Corner. Um, and then the only um uh piece of feedback really from last year um around a need was really a need for more enrichment resources. And which you're likely seeing in the assessment results um in the next section. And um we're really pleased Bridges actually came out with an enrichment program from second through fifth grade that matches um uh the Bridges Program. So we were able to purchase that for this year, which was a really important piece and area of focus for us for this year. So in looking back at our assessment results from last school year, we looked at our New Hampshire stats results and that's um what is um here in the report. Um, really, really strong results. We have um seventy-four percent of our students in grades three through six. I did include sixth grade uh because they did pilot the materials the year before. So I thought it was important to include um all of our grade levels that take New Hampshire SASS. Um, and uh just, you know, for a comparison point, the state average for those grade levels is forty-six percent. So the state average is forty-six percent of students being proficient above on math on New Hampshire SASS, and we had seventy-four percent of our students proficient or above. So um a huge amount of students uh compared to what that average across the state is. Um, the other really uh uh important piece is that the um largest percent of our population is actually in that level four or above proficiency level. So we had um for third, fourth, fifth and sixth grade, we have forty percent of our students that are actually performing above grade level. Um, hence uh why our teachers really needed those enrichment resources and why Sherling does so much work um with our students and with our teachers, the enrichment. And uh what's incredible too, uh which you rarely see, but that level one, um we only have four percent of our students in level one, which is a below proficiency category, which again um pretty unheard of assessment results to see this, um, you know, how how strong data is. So we were really um pleased and uh felt it really helped to uh, you know, that the, as we said, um, the Bridges Math Program really supports many of the changes we've already made, the way that we've been teaching that. It's just nice to have that complete program um to grab and to implement and have the resources and the materials that you need. And then again, that collaboration. Um, I did in the report also break down by grade level and provide a little bit more detail. Um, but um the other next steps, which I mentioned at um uh the last board meeting is really um sixth grade, so sixth grade teachers, really sixth through eighth grade teachers at down at AMS um are piloting a program this year, the illustrative math program. So Christine has been participating in um many uh work sessions and professional development and time to collaborate um uh with those uh materials. So that is our next piece. So we started with a K five program and then rolling up really looking at that sixty program. So we're excited to continue that math work and to provide that support to teachers. Um, we spent um a significant amount of time on in service day, working with our pilot teachers as well, which I think was a huge help to just have that opportunity after a month of school to get together, to connect and to work with grade levels. So um and you know, my firm was able to, Sherling was a help as well, uh just in pulling some resources and um really helping to guide those read levels during that that uh collaborative time together on service day. So we're really pleased with um a very successful implementation so far in year one. So we're going to continue to look at our assessment results and um continue to support our students and our teachers with our money.
And if I could just say too, um, just to accentuate the point around, while Bridges is a a robust program, the the key to making Bridges work here is that it lines up to the mindset and the the approach to mathematics that had been happening for a number of years. So when I see the work the teachers are doing around Bridges, which is very robust and there's a lot to it, um, the reason it works so well is because it aligns to what was already really good work and and um philosophy and mindset around mathematics. So um it's it's nice to see it all come together.
We often say that programs don't change teaching practice. It's the professional development and starting with the professional development, starting to change practice and finding the program that matched that and fit. Um, really, you know, um, it is that most successful way to go. And it's wonderful that we're able to really do um the deep professional development and then find the program that matched and and worked for us. So I feel like that was the sweet spot with the work that we did. Um, which is, I think, why, again, we're seeing such successful assessment results so early on in program implementation.
Great results. Thank you, everybody. Awesome. Um, when, when was the assessment taken and how often did you do it?
Yeah, once.
Once?
Yes, and it was, um, these assessment results were towards the end of this full year last spring.
And that would be the same this year as?
Yes.
Yeah, so uh one thing that I'd I'd like to add is, you know, appreciate the work done around, you know, the implementation of Bridges. It's clearly having an impact. And as we start to talk a little bit about data, um if we recall, in the summer and in in September, we started kind of rolling out how how we're gonna use data. And we we talked about, there's gonna be internal data that we use for for teachers and admin and and in SAU types to look at, to see how how students are growing and where they're improving. And then there's gonna be data that we use to determine the effectiveness of a school, a district or an SAU. And then there's gonna be data, like you're receiving tonight, that talks a little bit about, you know, effectiveness, but mostly about program implementation and and evaluation of a program. And and so I appreciate that the work and it's clear that that it is uh being implemented the the way it was intended. Um, and in fact, it's it's an interesting how things kind of intersect and I think it's the 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 smallness of the school and and how um how the program is implemented. I had the opportunity to speak with a panel of students the other day. And and one of the questions, you know, is is how do you know you're learning? How do you know you're learning? And a lot of their comments, you know, four to five kids who were willing to answer the call, uh, they handled about math. Talked about the math, the the acquisition of content and skills surrounding math. And and so it's a, it's a direct correlation to this program and how it does challenge kids at different levels. Um, and so on, you know, from my perspective early on, and and pretty pleased, glad to be happy for it. So good stuff. So just wanted to add, you know, the the important part is that how we're rolling out data and just want to get the boards comfortable with that and and talk. So appreciate it, appreciate the work. I think George touched on that last week, was how are we grading ourselves? How do we know? So it's part of that process of how it all rolls out. Questions, comments from the board? I wanted to backtrack because I wrote myself a note and I forgot to ask him. And I guess it's a question for Tom and maybe Amy. In the, in the special services update section, there you report, it's on page seven, six. Mentions that contracted speech and language pathologist, Michael George. And that's great, but my question is, is that something that was in the budget? Or if not, how are we paying for that position? Is this a new position that we're filling?
Yeah, I think it's the preschool one I talked about today to the committee. I think it's paid for at IDA.
Yeah.
Okay, what do you have on unanticipated need? Um, the IDA grant, that's a purpose of the federal grant to implement it by IDA.
Thank you. And at this point, the next agenda item we have tonight is the book reconsideration committee. And I had asked Mike to put this on because I guess I was, and I don't have it pulled up, but I was a little I guess concerned with how it was being framed and worded, with who was gonna be on the committee for Mount Vernon. Because the way it was worded initially was, we should have, you know, faculty members from all buildings and I'm just I was concerned with how the the formation of the committee was being framed up in the document, I guess. And I also had a question. It said that we should have two sixth graders, which I think is awesome, but I just wondered if this is gonna be a voting committee. Whether a sixth grader is at that skill level to make a decision about whether a book should be in the line during or not. So that's why I put it on the agenda. I don't know whether the rest of you had a chance to read the document, how it was being framed up, but it just seemed a little clunky to me as far as the wordage. And I sent that back to Mike and Yeah, and 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 we talked about it, you know, we've been talking about it quite a bit, it it, you know, at policy committees and in in various boards. And we're trying to be as consistent as possible through the the three districts, but I I spoke with Steve in preparation for this meeting and um, I'm gonna have him speak to a little bit about how the committee is organized and in the role of students versus the role of adults on it. And
And then Sarah and Jess, it's the policy committee. So um, a- as we, I think we talked about previously, so last year we had a very, I don't know percent, but it was, um, you know, at one of the districts, there was a we had to initiate the book reconsideration committee. And um by policy, it's supposed to be a standing committee. Um, so to form the committee uh and have it uh in case you need it. And that practice wasn't done last year. So this year, we put in all the districts and trying to form the committee, trying to hoping we don't necessarily need a committee. Um, but the question, uh and we have made some provisions and if the uh, if this board wanted to wait until the policy that Sarah and Jess, it's happy to wait until that goes through. But really what the intent of this stage was to really get a solicitation out to community members. Because the the kids and the faculty member we have pretty good access to, it's pretty prescriptive. It's the um library media specialist. Um, and then appointed by, I think, the administration for the others. But it was trying to get, so we had a couple of community and community members on call if we ever needed it, because that that takes a couple of weeks. That's the only part that held us up in the in the South Eagan journey was the solicitation and selection of community members to serve. Um, everything else handles pretty quickly. Um, that's really the only piece now is to get authorization from the board to put out to looking for volunteers to serve at book reconsideration. Needed, collect those names and then have a, have a system for the board to like really get to, it's workshop grade. If you get more than the board, you know, could evaluate the application and do it. The kid piece, um, I think in serial language that we put in, I think it was um with parent permission.
Yeah.
And um as appropriate, something like that.
With guidance committee, so if it was a particularly um controversial book, the kids might only be asked about the topic, not necessarily to review the item, like meaning the adults in the room would clearly guide that conversation in a sensitive way. It's a very sensitive topic. So I think that um that would be a procedural issue, but it's implied in the policy and I don't know if that helps to create it a little bit, but yeah, it's definitely with parental permission and with the understanding that um the kids would only be involved in the parts of the discussion that need them to be involved.
Okay.
So it might not be the whole discussion.
Right.
And and you know, my my voice in that piece was, you know, it's in this lab where the sixth grade, it's not, we're not asking a sixth grader to approve a high school book.
Right.
Right, so I'm okay with, I like parent permission and I like the the process that allows, you know, some flexibility, but typically, if it's in a book, it's free choice. And so having, but and thinking about some kids might not be using that topic. They don't have to do it. If parents say, no, 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 then that's
Yeah, the preliminary wording here, Pete, is um for elementary age children that may be on the committee, the committee may limit the scope of the involvement of the student member or members to assure age-appropriate participation.
Okay. For this stage, we'd really like to get a couple of uh community members ready.
Okay.
And solicitate, that's solicit, solicit.
It's been a long day.
And that would start us up and then we can convene the rest as needed. Cool beans?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. She's our policy expert.
Really comfortable with with where we're at with it. If that helps you at all.
No, I appreciate this discussion. But I think we get a couple of community members. I think it's one-year term and chain of terms they can rotate off.
I think it's two years.
So one-year terms may be instituted as needed to create staggered to your terms. If you need to catch up.
Yeah.
And have we had any interest yet? We're waiting for this meeting. Okay, so we'll put it out uh uh soon, in the very near future.
I thought we approved it last meeting, or was it just approving? Yeah, I think we just wanted to, there was some questions we wanted.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is to discuss the snow day uh policy. That uh and I think we have some people.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have, and we met, you know, just, you know, we've met here as a board. Um, had some conversations, resulted in conversations with MBEA. Uh, and then after that conversation, they requested some time of the board and we just wanted to to have a conversation with them, give them the floor and and we'll start, you know, the next round of it. So thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Give you the floor. We know, we know who you are, but just tell us who you are, it's gonna be a whole and people who may be listening online.
I'm Sherling Brown.
And I'm Maggie Lee, and we're co-presidents of the Mount Vernon Education Association. And really, for the purposes of tonight, we decided that um Maggie's going to feel free to jump in, but one of the things um that brings me a little more uh knowledge on this topic is that I served as a um executive board member last year and I've been on the prior to negotiations. Um, and so Maggie really just didn't think it would be fair for her to represent conversations that we've had in the past.
Um, Sherling is very more institutional.
And so that's pretty much it. I want to read directly from this and that is because it's very important to me that I represent um our membership uh in the best way that I can. And then I do have copies for you all. Um, we recognize we're not gonna get an answer tonight. We're just hoping that this is um an opportunity for this sort of uh here our membership's perspective on the decision that was made. Um, the Mount Vernon Education Association thanks you for the opportunity to speak with you today. We have always enjoyed a cordial and respectful relationship and look forward to sharing our thoughts with you about your decision with regards to making up snow days. We were informed that the Mount Vernon School Board would be discussing the waiving of snow days after the board meeting on August seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Our membership was notified the evening of this meeting and was not invited to offer our perceptions or thoughts on this matter at that time. As a follow-up, we were sent a letter on August twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three to serve as notice of the board's intention to make up all snow days moving forward. Maggie and I presented this letter to our staff, and as expected, the membership was disappointed with the board's decision. And we're here tonight to speak on their behalf, and it was a unanimous decision that we come and speak for you. The main contention of the MBEA in this matter revolves around past practice. For greater than ten years, up to five snow days have always been waived by the school board. We've never had to stand before you other than last year and ask for these days to be waived. When we switched to an hours-based calendar and minutes were added to our school day, we never had to petition for these days to be waived. They have always historically done so. This was not a decision or stance that was presented by the membership of the Mount Vernon Education Association. Instead, it was negotiated and put into practice by members of the SAU. For all these years, this practice has been mutually accepted by members of both the Mount Vernon School Board and the Mount Vernon Education Association. The only time that we were informed that we had to make up snow days within the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. This was the first year after our school times changed, and our day was shortened to a length that matched the time in school prior to the switch to the hours-based calendar. As such, our membership was informed that we would have to make up snow days due to the lack of minimum hours of instructional time. For the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we added this time back into our day. This was not solely done because we wanted to have snow days waived. Instead, it was because we felt that if students were going to arrive at the village school so early, we were going to take advantage of those precious early minutes of momentum. By adding these instructional minutes, our membership put our length of day back to what had been observed for nine of the prior ten years. With this added time, we were more, we more than met the requirements for hours of an elementary school in our state. We have gone back into the files of draft proposals made during our last negotiation cycle. These documents span the timeframe of October twenty twenty to December twenty twenty. We have searched the draft proposals submitted by the Mount Vernon School Board for consideration and note that at no time during this process did the board seek to add days, bring up the language, or seek to change class practice in regards to the waiving of snow days. Had the board asked to make amendments in this area, we may have considered it in our response proposals. It certainly would have had implications in our negotiations and the process of give and take between the Mount Vernon School Board and the Mount Vernon Education Association. Our membership maintains that we finalized our contract agreement with the assumption that snow days would continue to be waived as they had been for those prior years. Our membership is not closed to the idea of adding time to our school day or year. We just expect that making changes will occur in a transparent and collaborative manner. We understand that there is a recognized protocol and procedure in making changes to our contract. It occurs during open negotiations between the school board and our membership. We strongly feel that we have always had a respectful, collaborative, and transparent relationship with this process in the past. However, to change the intended and mutually agree to some conditions of our contract outside of contract negotiation does not feel respectful or collaborative. We respectfully ask that you reconsider your decision and agree to take up this issue again during open negotiations. So I just want for you all to have so that you can ask us any questions. And we can do our best to represent and bring back any ideas or questions that you may have. Oh, sure. Do you need one? We did make um extra, so I would be happy, but I wanted to just make sure that.
It has a specific language of what was uh the decision maker. That was made in ours. It's not written in this, right?
It's not written in.
Do we have a record of that that we can look at at the moment? We have to go back to.
You intend to make up stuff. They intend to make up stuff. That's communicated with every deal.
Any other question in the comments for Maggie or Charlene?
Yeah, I think we would have to go back and review things from the board perspective before response.
Yes. Uh, what would, how can we get that onto the agenda for next slide? Just yeah, make a note of it and roll it, roll it over. Then I would like to reconsider it. Is that seem appropriate? Yeah.
It's an appropriate line, I'm for sure.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
We may need. Oh, you're good man. What's that Netflix stuff?
We want to watch the budget.
Oh, yes.
Hold on, I just got to share the screen to the consumers. Oh, sorry, sorry. There it is. Just give me a minute. Cause I gotta share.
So while they're getting us set up on the screen, our next uh agenda item is a superintendent, Mr. Barry to and our business administrator, it's basically to present the full year twenty-five draft one budgets. The floor is all yours.
Was good, was the right one?
Yeah, we're good.
He was telling me.
All right, no, I appreciate the opportunity to to present the the budget. Mostly with with Amy's support and development. It's a real privilege and honor to to be able to do this. I want to kind of thank the board for the opportunity to to walk through kind of how the thought process went behind the development of a budget. The budget is certainly one of uh the areas that's a reflection of of what you value and where you want to put your energies and your priorities. And um, and I thought a lot of effort went into this from Christine and Tom, teachers. Uh, to the to the people at Mount Vernon as as we kind of dug into this. And I want to remind people to move on, Steve, that it that is a draft one, it is, it's, it's, it's early. It and uh that it's uh going to be a process. And you know, we mean, we'll talk a little bit about how we move forward at the end of this. But just kind of keep things in mind, uh, education uh is is highly regulated and uh, there's lots of things that you don't really have control out of when you, when you're developing a budget. And so we want to kind of keep those things in mind. Uh, the other thing, the unique thing about uh a school at this size, it's tight. It's tight, and I know the board is very familiar with that, and so um I think a lot of creative conversations went into this budget, and I really do appreciate that. Um, as we move forward, uh, always keep in mind that you know, what we're trying to do at at in SAU thirty-nine and and Mount Vernon is to always, you know, work towards our mission. Right? And you can see some of the areas that we we focused on, you know, as we developed this budget. Uh, communication, data, you know, our our thing is to improve literacy. Uh, put in time into uh instructional time for for our students. And you'll see that reflected in 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 various uh areas of this budget and all the all the schools throughout SU thirty-nine. Thank you. Um, one of the more challenging things to to accomplish in SU thirty-nine and in Mount Vernon and and uh is this desire that has been really, really clear to me since assuming the role of a superintendent. There's this desire to really have high academic achievement that that you saw tonight with some of the data and that you've seen in in the past. But there's also an equal desire to to uh, you know, support, you know, the overall social emotional well-being of of all the students. Uh, I think uh um MV is uniquely situated and has done historically a really good job of of, you know, working towards this. And uh you can see that throughout all the practices that exist here and 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 how they've worked. Uh, so as we keep moving on, you'll see, you know, some of the priorities that you saw back in the in the in the spring and into the summer. Uh, these are, things have been presented, you know, we're going to focus on reading, we're going to work towards instructional time, we're going to make sure teachers are supported. Um, we're keep going, Steve, we're going to keep uh making sure that, you know, we work towards showcasing all the good work that happens. Uh, our goal is to improve facilities, our goal is to pass budget, and what you see here is a concerted effort to make sure that the the e- educational experience is is as strong as it can be for students that attend Mount Vernon and all the other schools. So as we kind of dig into to Mount Vernon a little bit, you can see some, let me go past and see a little bit. You can see so that Tom and 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 the teachers and the staff here did a a really nice job of aligning their priorities to to the overall, the SAU's priorities, which is really important as you as you develop a budget. And as you, you know, work together to make sure that students are, as we talked about, achieving the mission with, you know, high student achievement. But overall, strong social, emotional um development and growth. And as you can see, uh, you know, I think, Tom, you've done a really nice job with outlining where you're going to put your energies. And and budgets reflect, you know, where you're going to put your energies, and so these are our goals and priorities that you've seen already, and so I just wanted to take a moment uh to, you know, roll this out again, because I think, you know, what we don't want to do here uh in Mount Vernon and uh SU thirty-nine is just revisit mission and 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 goals and priorities just once. Cause it's a constant thing that we're striving for, it's constantly something that people are working on. Um, and everything is connected to these things, and so the budget you will see is is a direct reflection of uh the efforts and priorities that people are putting forth here, and so I appreciate that, Tom.
And I'd just say one thing on that note, and I forgot to mention this during my report, each month I provide an update on our goals. Um, and so I don't know if you saw that link in the in the uh in the report, but it is in there. And I feel really strongly about providing that to you because, you know, some of the things like Jeff, Jeff's question about the PD, you know, I want to make sure you see the the progress and the process over the course of the year um around these priorities. And the other thing is, and I've said this before, is that we're not, we're not restarting every year, you know, it's ongoing work and the priorities are are defined, but that we're we're staying the course on that we feel are are that we, all of us feel are the the priorities for for our school.
Yeah, no, and um as we go through this, you know, chase that in, you know, and the clarification. And appreciate the work that's been done. So and we continue to move forward. Amy, you want to talk a little bit about what this looks like?
Budget?
Yeah.
I would.
That's really where everyone wants.
One more. Okay, so to cut to the chase, um, the FY twenty-five draft one operating budget is a five point seven percent increase or three hundred fifty-eight thousand two oh eight over the FY twenty-four adopted budget. Uh, of that increase, four point one percent or two five six three four eight is the difference between the FY twenty-four operating budget and the FY twenty-five default. And then the difference between the FY twenty-five default and the FY twenty-five proposed is one hundred, one thousand eight hundred and sixty or one point six percent. So just as a reminder, this calculation excludes the special warrant articles that were passed in FY twenty-four to give a true apples-to-apples comparison between the current year and the proposed operating budget. So next, I just want to talk a little bit about um assumptions and drivers. So a major driver in this budget is a significant projected increase in health and dental insurance at twenty-one point nine percent and four point seven percent for that respectively. So this added over a hundred and ten thousand dollars to the budget. So for perspective, the current year increased from last year to this year was four point one percent for health and one point five percent for dental. So the um the guaranteed maximum rate from Health Trust will be set officially in October. But we have been given our our likely rates early. Um, some good news, there's a net reduction in student services due to changes in the needs of the student population. So even um with an added uh position of a paraprofessional and increase in special ed transportation, we're still seeing a net reduction. There is a projected increase in the tuition paid to the Amherst School District based on increased enrollment um in the student population. The New Hampshire retirement system is set for two years, and this is year two, so the rate remains status quo from last year at nineteen point six four percent for teachers and thirteen point five percent for non-teachers. And the uh MBEA contract will be in its fourth year and will expire at the end of next year. So enrollment, uh, based on the current NESTDEC projections, enrollment is expected to be relatively flat overall. But the next round of projections will change based on October one actuals. Uh, particularly for grade one, as we saw a significant increase in kindergarten students this year. And as Steve mentioned earlier, it it is tricky um to project those early, early grades, especially kindergarten. So the number of teachers is not expected to change, maintaining it to per grade level. Um, included on this slide is the NESTDEC projected enrollment, the actual enrollment as of October one and the NESTDEC uh projected for FY twenty-five. So as you can see, the total number of students is pretty consistent, but the actual number of kindergartens, kindergartners versus the NESTDEC projected showed an increase of ten students. So this number of students will likely affect these projections that you see here for grade one. So I would expect that that number to be closer to thirty-two as opposed to, I think it's twenty-four. Um, and the student, the teacher-student ratio would be closer to sixteen. So we do expect new NESTDEC projections, um, hopefully before the end of this calendar year. So certified staffing, there are no changes in the certified staffing proposed this year, and we're staying with the current model of specials that was put in place last year. For non-certified staffing, as discussed, we're projecting a need for an additional special ed paraprofessional. And we are looking to include the point seven five custodian in the budget um that was in the prior year budget, um as opposed to the role being filled by an outside contractor as it is now. Uh, we feel it's it's really ideal to have a staff person, if I think it's actually working out pretty well this year, but um typically, we want to have a staff person fill that role. Um, so the net increase for actuals is uh one point seven five positions, so the one special ed and the point five for the facilities position. Yeah. So the default calculation, so this slide shows how the default is calculated. Um, just as a refresher, I always like to give this spiel every year, so the default budget amount um is that the amount of the same appropriations in the operating budget from the prior, from the previous year reduced and increased by any debt service contracts and other obligations previously incurred or mandated by law and reduced by one time expenditures contained in the operating budget and by salaries and benefits of physicians that have been eliminated in the proposed budget. So to calculate the default, the FY twenty-four warrant articles are removed. From the F Y twenty four budget and increase or decrease adjustments are applied. So contractual contractual salaries and benefits are the source of the largest increase. Primarily to uh, due to the health and dental increases as well as. Salary increases according to the collective bargaining agreement. The increase in tuition to the Amherst School District uh, is based on the calculation stipulated in the tuition agreement. Um, and as you see, we we do have additional students that are. Um, that are coming into Mont Vernon and then being tuitioned into the Amherst School District. The increase in the grant and food service expenditures is included as these are offset by revenue. Um, but they will not have an impact on the tax impact because they are offset by revenue. Um, student services costs are including transportation, as I said, is actually a net decrease. Um, and then any change to the S A U assessment uh, will be included here, that amount is still to be determined. Um, as we talked about at the S U board meeting. So this determines the default amount, so this year the total change is four point one percent or two hundred fifty six thousand six fifty two. So the proposed budget calculation, so the difference between the F Y twenty five default calculation and the proposed budget. Um, includes items that are not required to be included in the default and potentially at risk of not being funded. So the total amount for these items are salary and benefit adjustments. For the non-unemployed, so those not covered under the M D E A contract. Um, it should be noted also that there is a significant increase in the health and dental. And that is not included in the default for those non-unemployed, even though we will have to pay those. Um, the still facilities, um, these increases are due mostly to utility costs, repair. Uh, and preventive maintenance. The food service transfer that may be required from the general fund to cover the shortfalls in the food service budget. Uh, technology is primarily device replacement, software, parts and supplies. And cost difference in the regular ed transportation contract is also um. Not included in the default, but in the proposed, and the the transportation amount for this year. Is um, is capped at the F Y twenty three voted amount. So at in in the default, so as you recall, um, one of the ways we were able to make the default. Budget work for this year and absorb the increase in the contract costs. For both Amherst and Mont Vernon was to re- decrease the number of buses from seventeen to fifteen. So we've we've um, and working with the bus company. We've uh, found that really the ideal number of buses should be sixteen. Um, and this will allow for more time routes for all students to to get to school and get home um, in the district. So the bottom line, total difference between the default and the proposed budget is a hundred and one thousand eight hundred and sixty or. Uh, a one point six percent increase. So, um, this comparison breaks up the budget by the three major funds. Uh, the general fund, the food service fund, and the grants fund. So food service is increasing primarily due to insurance election changes. And and a modest projected increase in food costs. The goal is to have food service fully offset by revenue, but we are budgeting for a potential transfer. From the general fund to cover any shortfalls. Grant funding is budgeted as an expenditure as well as an offsetting revenue, and it's expected to increase by eight thousand five hundred dollars. So it shows up as an expense, which isn't great, but it is offset by by revenue. Um, as expect, as expected, the major source of the budget. Increase is in the general fund, but it's important to note that while the budget is a five point seven percent. Point four of that is expected to be offset by revenue. So this slide just provides the visual records, representation of the composition of the budget, and as expected. Most of it is comprised of salaries and benefits and the tuition to the Amherst School District. So.
Think you've answered this multiple times, but I'll ask it again. How often do we on insurance? What's the process for us to to look for bids for the business?
Yeah, you can. Now, we talked to Nina about this.
So you can bid it.
Yeah.
And so the differences when you come anthem, you go to go to uh. Uh, signal and this is the school here, there's so, but and this is one of the things, though. Whether it's uh, Health Trust or School Care, ninety eight percent of the cost is claims. It's not the management. Um, so what happened post-COVID is a lot more, there's a lot more teachers being done that. So that's right, and so it's even if you if you went with a different vendor. It's all the same, people are in the same region or, you know, the same place. It's it's uh, and we can do it and and we can, uh, we can take a look and uh, Health Trust will give us a claims report. And they actually classify it by license, you know, what, there's some things we can check, we looked at it in my past job. Um, lifestyle, like smoke. They can figure out how much claims are connected to people with smoke, and if you stop smoking, you have less. That's a lifestyle trust, but somebody that has nothing to do with it, it's just. Um, but it is not, you could bid it, but again, the vast majority of of health insurance costs. Are claims, not Health Trust, not School Care, just claims. Now, there is a little bit of of real of. Years ago, Health Trust and the pool, so we're in a pool. So Mount Vernon is pooled with like organizations. And there was a time where good years, they could save money. And and then very stabilize your tax impacts, and then there was a lawsuit, now they can't, so there's not enough, they don't have a very little buffer now. To flatten, now they use some of theirs, a little bit of buffer, and they use that to keep them down a little bit. And there's a board um, that makes these decisions, just like you, board and Health Trust and Board of Products. But this is statewide, if not nationwide, we can find out what their their health insurance increases are prime, where uh, School Care. But it's gonna be very simple, but you can bid it. Uh, Amherst requires bidding in their contract every couple of years, so I mean, it doesn't. I don't know if the vendor, sometimes contracts have the vendor has to be anthem. I don't know if this collective bargaining does that look recently, so and and if the. Contract of where I came from, the vendor was in the contract. It will be anthem, then you can't bid it. But you can bid it. So I don't think so either, I don't, but so you can bid it, but I don't think, you're not gonna get ten percent. The health card, the new vendors, just not gonna happen.
And and we're not alone, this is um, all over the state.
Is it possible for you to describe us, when you say we're not alone, it makes me think, oh, can we? Ask a couple of comparable school districts what numbers they're being told? Um, because I I would like some evidence that. There isn't another similar school district that you know of that isn't getting uh.
Hop, Hopdoo was nineteen. Okay, I mean, I call. All right, so you guys can kill this too, uh, and there's uh, they capped it, some districts are twenty fours.
Raymond is a twenty five. Uh, and I was at a superintendent's conference and and they were doing an icebreaker around us. And a lot of seventeens, a lot of eighteens, a lot of twenties. And uh, it's, but I, we can get you a list, absolutely get you a list of of competent competent.
Yeah.
Schools and districts.
Basically, you know, if we're going to do anything, what's our expected return in taking an action? Right, if there's some other school that stick out there, it's only seeing a five percent increase, well, then it's worth us taking action. Well, everyone is seeing nineteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. And then there's not really a benefit of taking connection.
And you have to, and it's also not just a percent increase, like I used to say, so so, you know, I was in Hopdoo for twenty billion years. And everything in Hop was bought. And our our claim, our insurance went up eighteen percent, but our our premium was still less than the Bo School District, even though there's one of fifteen percent. Because over years they went up, so it's not just, it's, you have to look at, you look at the, right, you have to look at the premium you're paying.
Okay, well, um, then that's my question, basically.
But and one of the things that when you, yeah, it it to me, and and I think Amy would agree. S A U thirty nine, it has to be one healthcare vendor. Mount Vernon can't jump to School Care and South Hegan up on Anthem, and there's one more, I forget the name. Maybe you can't do it, it is very hard to administer. Like, for me to come in and do hire, oh, you're gonna be on School Care, you're gonna be on Anthem. So it's really good, this is, and we get, we get economy of scares. But you can imagine having more than one healthcare vendor for S A U thirty nine, you'd have to add. Another H R person who just focused on that one vendor. Um, some districts self-insure. Um, National School District and Concord School District self-insure. Which means they have, you know, so much that they put away and they they do it themselves, but also you're squeezing out, there's a management fee, claims are claims. What you're talking about is the management fee, and Health Trust is a good management fee, I'm not, I don't work for Health Trust, my wife doesn't work for Health. I have no dog in the fight, except they are the largest provider and they happen to work with Anthem, but whether you're at Signa, you're still gonna go to the same doctor. The vast majority of times, so usually in, you know, both.
I believe it was um, prescription costs as well, and I know that.
Yeah.
For a huge significant um, portion of the increases because of increased prescription costs.
Makes perfect sense.
And um, probably more of our employees on more prescriptions as well, and the increase in the cost of those prescriptions.
In in the way the G M R is calculated, it's kind of funky, I don't wanna get into it, but there's, it's twelve, there's, it's a twelve month, okay? And then, but the time when the actual comes, this first six months is replaced. Because this is a projection, the G M R is a projection over the last twelve months, but the actuals are the twelve months in the calendar. So one gets replaced, so it is possible to look down.
It must, it has, that has happened, yeah.
In in, I don't know if you want a funny story. My first year as superintendent, when I was a young whippersnapper, winning nothing. The former superintendent, the S A U thirty nine, Mary Athie Jennings, told me. You never budget the full G M R, it never comes in, just budget at half, then don't worry about it, I went back to the B A's, hey, this is what they said, they said, you're kidding. Cause then if you don't budget for the G M R, the G M R comes in, you're in trouble, we're not recommending that. You budget the G M R, but that was the advice I got as a first year superintendent from the former superintendent in this wonderful world that I didn't follow. But that was the path, that's that's crazy risky.
Yeah, very risky.
You've all done your homework, you've got the answers, but I think as we, as we move this process down the road. There's a couple of things that I need to work with you on, because we don't wanna have default budget again, is we gotta, we gotta. Whiteboard and and storyboard what what the default budget means and what it impacts, one. But also something like this, because just like we did, you look and you see nineteen point four percent. Immediately you start asking questions like, all right, how can we reduce that? And the simple answer is, we we could, but we're probably not gonna see any value. Because it's gonna be the same way, no matter who we go with, and we're we're tied to the other schools. But we we need to show that as well.
Yeah.
And say, look, here, you know, we need to show Raymond ninety five percent, I've been nineteen, whatever it is.
Yeah.
When we have our meeting and show that at least we've addressed the issue and. We don't like it either, but that's.
And and I should say, we haven't officially gotten our G M R yet, this year, it was, it's because. They were so high that they were calling and letting them know. Normally, we just get a letter and they tell us, but this was early.
But if you think about it. The what's happening here is happening there, they can't hire nurses, right, the the employee costs are going up. All the costs are going up because of inflation. They're sure, every every cost is cascades and it comes out in health insurance, and when you add increase. Prescription, number of prescriptions, increased procedures with higher, higher employee costs in that sector. Of our business, it cascades to this percent. Um, it's funny, guys, I was very used to fifteen, sixteen, seventeen percent every year, and I got here. Boy, are you kidding, I've never seen that, what am I, blood, this is like normal. In the old days, so we had a few good years.
I think cause we're pooled as S A U thirty nine, so it um, across all of S A U thirty nine, it's based on claims. So, you know, things can even out with the more, with more staff, and I think because Hop is so small.
We were, we were pooled giant.
Oh, were you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, one thing that, I mean, I could need this, but when, and when Bedford High opened. They opened with, say, two hundred young teachers. Health insurance is not, guess what happens, those two hundred where they grow together. Now they have two hundred old teachers. Right, interesting.
Older.
But it's, it has to do with the, right, the demographic of your faculty. And where you are. Um, you know, cause that's just like everybody else, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure, all right, next one. All right. So, um. Your long-term facilities and funding plan was started many years ago and has worked very well for this district. Uh, this bridge goes the projects and proposed funding plan through F Y thirty one. Uh, the next big project is phase two of the H back duct replacement. Um, program, uh, Roger and I are also proposing to review the facilities plan. By this spring to review the current projects and funding and make some adjustments. Uh, projects that will likely need to be included are H duck equipment and eighty eight ramp, water system design. Uh, parking lot paving and potentially a building generator. Um, the the goal of this plan is to always maintain at least a hundred thousand dollars in case of an emergency issue. And I'll just note, you can see that um, there's some interest that we're earning now, which is exciting.
Real money.
I didn't used to include it because it was so nominal, yeah, but now it actually adds some money, so, which is great.
That's a great job.
All right, so now we're gonna take a look at the um, do review of the reserve funds that we have. So there's currently four funds that are established for the Mount Vernon School District. Uh, and as we saw on the previous slide, the balance of the property maintenance fund is a hundred and fifty nine thousand. Um, uh, we're recommending a, going back to the fifty thousand dollar contribution that you have done. Uh, most years with the exception of last year, so we're recommending that to be funded from the assigned fund balance. Um, we're also recommending a twenty thousand dollar contribution. For the Student with Disabilities Fund, uh, this is the same as what was requested last year. And we we also wanna bring to your attention the possibility of making a name change to the Special Education Trust Fund. Um, that the name Students with Disabilities, I think, was something from a very long time ago, so. Um, but that would be up to the board, it would be a warrant article to change the name of that. Uh, the Health Insurance Fund was created last year and we're recommending the same contribution. Um, especially in light of the significant increase in projected rates, I think this is probably a wise move. Um, we're also recommending a new fund this year, a technology fund. So we developed a three-year technology plan that incorporates this fund. To act in a similar man- manner as the Property Maintenance Fund. So this will allow us to level the budget while planning for future expenditures. Uh, and and working with the uh, Technology Director. He's re- recommending a twenty five thousand dollar um, contribution from the Amherst Fund Balance. So we're not recommending a contribution to the Tuition Contingency Fund this year. Although due to an increase in the number of students projected versus students attending A M S this year, I think this may be a request. No, attending A.
Oh, okay.
Yep, um, this may be a request in future budget years as we keep an eye on enrollment increases. So just to uh, wrap it up, this is the total appropriation comparison um, for, from F Y twenty four to F Y twenty five. So it has the budget and the on request from last year to this year. Um, last year, the the major differences we have, have the school renovation addition study that um. The scrutiny on earlier this evening, and that's not being requested for next year. So finally, um, the budget review and next steps are on this slide. So so far, the Mount Vernon Budget Committee has met officially once. Um, there's currently two members, the moderator is working very diligently to find a third member. So that we can have a full committee, so we've done a full committee yet. Um, but I did meet with interested folks and the moderator on Zoom meetings. Um, went through the process. Went through the process and the moderator is, is doing some more recruiting. I'm hoping to hear from her within the next couple of days. So if they do find another member, they'll need to meet officially to organize and assign subcommittee members. I'm thinking, so you just thought about this today, since we have those subcommittee meetings set up and they haven't, they don't have a full committee yet. Wondering if maybe we look to consolidate and just have maybe one or two meetings with all of them and with board members. We probably would just have to pick a couple of board members, maybe two and two for the, for two different days, just to try to make it easier for them. So I'm just concerned about trying to keep to this schedule that we have, so we don't have a full committee. So, so I'm going to talk to Kristy in the next day or two and see, actually probably tomorrow, to see if we can come up with a creative solution. So, because we really do want to have a committee. So that's where we are with that, and then the rest of the schedule is provided here as well. Do you want me to do a brief overview of the budget file? I know most of you were, no, okay. Don't look at me bad. It's, it's the same as last year. There's the question form, you just hover over it and you can.
Same as the SEU.
Same as the SEU budget, exactly the same format, so. You'll share out that presentation. I'm going to share everything with you folks tonight. And then it will all be posted on the SEU website tomorrow, so that members of the public can access it as well. Can I make a request?
Yeah. Before our next meeting, could you share out your slide presentation before the meeting, just so we can, I know that's hard.
I can try.
It's helpful to be able to have some context for questions.
Yeah.
Because it feels a little blind and.
Yeah. I hear you.
Okay, I wanted to give the same feedback, by the way, at the SEU board meeting.
Yeah.
I know, sorry to be that.
So it's actually much easier to do that for draft two. Draft one is a, a big lift to get it just for the meeting. But for draft two, it's really the variances, so I can do that. Thank you. Yeah.
And with that, it is draft one. There are a few things that, you know, we have talked about internally. I'm sure people will talk to the most themselves and will continue to work on this process and you know, I know it's, you know, seeing some of the numbers is not where people want to be and, and so, but trust that we're going to try to work to do our best to, to bring a budget that, you know, people can can get behind and it will make sense and logical and, and fortunate that it started well, you know, early in the year for this. So Amy, I appreciate the work. Like I said, all the work that went into it behind the scenes. And, you know, we'll go connect.
Anything else, or, or questions?
What was the percent change between the proposed budget for last year and the proposed for this year? Proposed to propose? I think it was, if it had passed, what would that change?
No, proposal, both.
I don't want to fall to propose, I want to propose.
If the proposed had passed, if it had passed.
Yep.
What would be our percent change? And if you don't have it right now, it's okay, I don't want to put you on the spot.
No, it, it was eight point one. So operating budget in FY twenty-three to FY twenty-four proposed was eight point one percent. Operating to default was six point seven. Twenty-four to default to twenty-four proposed was one point four.
So it's less.
Do you remember, no, it was eight point one percent.
Which number did you want?
She wanted.
Last year's change over last year's proposed.
Twenty-four to twenty-five.
Yes. So if the budget that we prevented. I see. That number to this proposed, as if it had passed. Do you see what I'm saying?
Okay.
Yeah, that's a different number. That's not calculated. I'd have to look at that.
Okay.
Do you mind default?
Yeah.
We can get it for you.
Yeah, yeah. I'd be interested to know because I think. It is an interesting number. I'm interested in that.
Good, thank you, Amy.
Yeah.
Well done.
Thank you.
We are up to our second public comment. We have anybody from our esteemed audience that would like to speak or ask? Anything? Mr. Chamberlain, do we have anybody online?
We have one person online with, with, there was no handouts, sir.
Okay. So at seven to ten, that concludes our regular portion of our meeting. We do have non-public tonight. I think it's going to be fairly brief.
Yeah. We'll probably get this back.
Sure.
Since we're, we are going to reconsider this next week, kind of make a request for information. Regardless of the decision, I'm sorry. Can I request, if they provide us, let me, any, if we were to reverse the decision, how much did it, how did it cost us on budget? If we made a choice next week, we'd want to know if that's going to have any benefit in that. Is that possible? Yeah. Okay, that's all.
Except the motion to adjourn the regular meeting, we'll go on the non-public. So, I want to get a second.
One second.
My own favor, may we vote?
We'll call it.
We'll call it.
Lawrence, yes.
Andrew, yes.
I think the yes.
Echo the yes, bring the yes, and George is online, so. Four, nothing, a pass, so. Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Today, thank you.